What a way to spend your birthday night.
This is two in six years, so...
Okay, I've asked Matthew Tinker to open the meeting for us with a pledge and a prayer.
Good to stand for the pledge. Pledge and salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to... Hi, good to... Kevin Solomon, thank you for allowing us this few of a day to come out here today. We hope that the decisions we make will be in your interest and the best interest of the citizens of our county. Please be with our country tonight. We hope that it is a peaceful night across the country. The problems that we face, you've helped to heal. Be with all of our officers and first responders and the citizens who were out this evening. Please keep everyone safe for every thing at this time.
Okay, Tammy, call the roll. Okay, the next up is the adoption of the Loudoun County Commission Agenda. Before we do that, there are a few adds, and they're there for a reason. First up under Buddy will be the employee health insurance benefits. We have to do that before June 1st, which is today. Tracy has two grants. One is a no-match, and the other is a library grant that'll come out of the library fund. But those two have to be done tonight. That's the reason they were added. And Kelly has to add the courthouse committee that was formed a few meetings ago so that we can dissolve it tonight with a vote. Any other additions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get a place under the mayor's agenda. Item number seven, under Tracy Blair's item, that this be discussed at that time, and I will make a recommendation that we've totally withdrawn and fund and work with the EDA for this year. I think, Mayor, you have consulted with our attorney, and would you please report on that?
Yeah, it just looks laid out just like it is in the local. In order for any change to happen without the notice, it requires unanimous vote of all entities with the EDA. You know, this commission, you know, we can choose to do that. The only ones who'll get paid will be the attorneys. I agree, that's pretty plain to drive. Bob Bowman said, "The other TCA, another binding interlocal agreement, we can't without proper warning, proper communication."
And it's my fault, but I think that we just need to try to continue to work with the city as an EDA to hopefully establish a very good rapport and continue to give the relationship. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody want...
I will oppose the removal of that from the agenda. When we get to it, have a conversation with it. We'll take a vote. Bob Bowman's not here, he's not got a vote. There's a lot of different elements of this that really need some good discussion. We had some good discussion of it in our budget committee meetings. I would virtually own, we have a conversation, whatever it is, it is. I would like to add, Beau Carey called me, and he's still working on the burnt lumber in courthouse yard. And I'll just kind of tell you what he's told me, and Kelly's got some input on that for sure.
Yes, I talked to Beau Carey, and he has gone over and talked to the contractor, and the contractor, I'm going to... about the burnt lumber, and the contractor was like, "I don't care. Get them out here. I really don't care." He said they were going to the landfill, and he said, but he says he does need something from either Susan Husky or our board that says that he can have.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a chance also. I've spoken with Ruth McQueen, and if the company will donate them, I think you'll find that we can put this lumber on her property going up Fort Hill and should be disposed of it very quickly.
Well, the contractor even said he would move it right over there behind Beau's store so that they can all work on it.
Let's take a vote, and just let's look, whatever we need, let's vote to give the 150th committee the burnt up lumber.
We vote to give it back to the contractor, let him give it away.
It is a contract.
Well, and once we instruct the state to decide, it then becomes ours. Vote to give it back to the contractor, let him dispose of it, which would be a great opportunity. Problem solved, easy piece.
Well, just put it on the agenda, and we'll vote on something in a few minutes.
Okay, I'm going to put it under your name.
That's fine.
And it'll be under C.
That'll be fine.
Okay. Is everybody satisfied with the agenda changes that were proposed, with the exception of the EDA?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as it's been adjusted.
Okay, with the EDA under Buddy?
Yes. No, it's under Tracy.
But I would rather it be moved up, and that way with the mayors, they may have other agendas. I don't know their schedule.
I don't care where we move it, but I think they'll want to stay for the whole meeting.
Not really. I don't think they're that foolish.
They're very... No, I don't care where we put it on the agenda, but we do need to have a good conversation.
If the commission wants to address it before we can get to my stuff, I have no issue with that. I'm here for the duration.
Okay, I will put it between general public comments and the mayor's section. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any changes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Next up is the reading and acceptance of the April 6, 2020 Loudoun County Commission meeting minutes. Has everybody read them, and can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve them. It says it's written, I saw nothing out of ordinary with them.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to accept the minutes as written. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is general public comments. Pat Hunter, step up to the mic and tell us what's on your mind.
I'll do that.
I'm just glad to see Pat in action. That makes me think the whole country's getting better.
That's right.
She looks a lot better without the mask.
Yeah.
I can actually breathe and speak. My name is Pat Hunter, and I have a couple of concerns. One is in regards to the employee health insurance benefits. I did attend that meeting, and I heard the presentation, but there is going to be an increase. I believe it's four and a half, less the $100,000 that if you approve will be applied to the premium. I'd like to know what the annual premium is for this year, so we can calculate what the four and a half percent will be, because the majority of the cost is borne by the taxpayers. The employees' portion has not changed, and I believe it should change. To be fair to the employees and to the taxpayers, it should be an 80/20. That's what I pay with Medicare. And if I want an advantage plan or supplement, I have to pay for that also. So I think an 80/20 is a fair share, but we are looking at an increase.
So you say an 80 paid by the government and 20 by the employees?
Right, right. I think that would be a fair share. The other concern that I have is the policy that you are considering with regards to the mayor's request to add a policy to the employee handbook. And I have a concern about that, because I could not find it on the workshop agenda. I looked again to see if there was any information about that on the workshop agenda, and there was not. I did not attend the agenda, I mean, the meeting. But I'm going to tell you why I have concerns about a policy. This policy will affect at least the majority of the departments.
Pat, it's based on the Buddy Department.
I understand that, but out of 24 departments, 14 fall under the mayor, so that's going to be a big impact. And I can't help but think that if the mayor changes his policy, that the county officials, they too will follow with regards to this policy. Now, what I don't understand...
Do you know what the policy is? I'm not aware of it.
Well, it is a work-from-home policy for department heads reporting directly to the mayor. And like I said, out of 24 departments, 14 fall under the mayor, so we're talking about quite a few employees. I did a little bit of research today on that, and I don't understand really why it's just now being addressed, because in 2008, TASER, the Tennessee Advisory Commission on Intergovernmental Relations, spoke extensively about telecommuting and the advantages and disadvantages to doing that. Our own policy on the employee policy was actually adopted in 2015, so it wasn't addressed even then. I think that it should be tabled until other department heads have an input. I'm quite surprised that it wasn't discussed at the Salary and Benefits Committee, because last time, when the employee handbook was revised, it was an effort by the entire county government, which included other officials. And so I went and looked at the TASER, and it does talk about the pros and cons about telecommuting. And there are advantages, but like I said, I would be concerned by the policy, because the policy doesn't address some of the things that actually a sample policy from CTAS addresses. And in their temporary office policy procedures, it addresses things such as office hours and public access. List any changes to office hours, list any modifications to public access. That's information that the public should have about a policy that will affect the public as well. It also talks about list personnel policy changes here, temporary telecommuting, working from home, reduction in hours, changes to leave policies include employee timekeeping procedures. There's also the cost involved with supplying employees with equipment and VPN costs and other costs related. So I think these are all questions that need to be addressed before a policy is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. That is number eight under Tracy Blair. Mayor Harris, step to the podium, tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and County Commissioners, thank you. I just wanted to speak about, as mentioned, item seven under Tracy Blair's part, referring the resolution to reduce the funding for the EDA. The majority of the EDA board is here tonight, and we're just speaking out that really, just referring to the interlocal agreement, I'm sure you've seen this, but under paragraph six, it says that increases in non-wage operating expenses shall be required only if approved by the Board of Directors and concurred by a majority of the funding parties. And as referenced in the resolution, it also states in paragraph 11, this agreement may be altered or amended at any time by unanimous agreement of all the parties here too. So we're speaking for the board, I can just speak for the board as vice chairman. I've contacted, all the other board members have been contacted, we're all against that. We think the agreement speaks for itself. We're pleased with our director and the work he's done, has, you know, finally got a lot sold in Senator 75. A lot of things were accomplished this past year that we're proud of, and we think he's doing a good job there. So we don't support the resolution, and just wanted to come and address the commission on that, and I'd like for you to consider not adopting that resolution. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Eddie Simpson, step to the mic and tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and County Commission. I would like to also encourage the continued effort for you all to be the majority member of the EDA. I've served on the EDA under several directors, been on it for 12, 15 years, saw a lot of good things happen in this county. And I'm going to say 90% of them has been in agreement with the entire commission at the time. And, you know, it's not always easy, but, you know, we always do our best to recommend what's best for the cities and the county. And I feel like, I know this equal pay for the EDA has hit a big kick here in the last year or so. We've always had one commissioner that really pushed you for that, and you're not going to like this, but I think he is a cyber bully. All he does is try to embarrass everyone else on this commission and anybody in the city or county that'll listen to him to try to get his way. And I hate to see that for our county. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. And last but not least, the Honorable Mayor of Lenore City, Tony Akins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought you forgot about me.
No, you wanted to go last.
Oh, that's true. That's true. Let me just say that certainly I support the EDA. I think Jack Claus and his staff does a fantastic job, and I've been in meetings with Jack just in the last couple of weeks. Actually, one of them was today. And Jack, he puts in a lot of time, and he certainly is very helpful to the city and the county. And so, you know, as far as the funding goes, you all have heard me say this before about various different projects. You know, Lenore City, certainly Lenore City and Loudoun City, we do share more costs with the EDA along with other things, because of Lenore City and Loudoun City, taxpayers pay county taxes as well as their city taxes. So we do pay those costs, those extra costs. And one other thing that I'll sit down and be quiet, has been mentioned possibly of litigation. I don't think anything, anybody in this room wants litigation, and I certainly don't. And obviously, when litigation happens between government entities, only the taxpayers lose and the attorneys win. So again, I support the EDA and Jack Claus and his staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Concerning what you just heard. As a EDA board member for many years, I agree with everything that these fellows that came to the microphone said. That's what I was going to say then, but they've already said it. Got on stage.
All right. Next up on the agenda, I'm going to move number seven from Tracy Blair's section to now, and that's the consideration of a recommendation to approve a resolution to revise Loudoun County's allocation of expenses as indicated in the interlocal government agreement. Mayor, go ahead.
I would make a recommendation to the commission tonight that we totally withdraw the funding, or we go ahead and refund the EDA, and that we not send a letter. But one thing that I would like to request, we signed two contracts, 2000 and 2008, and at some time and point in the future, I would like to see the parties get together and revise these contracts every three to five years. I don't think that would be bad at all, and I think it can be done in agreement and benefit the county even greater possibly.
I believe we voted to do that, and I believe Loudoun City voted to do that too, is to begin to weaken the EDA contract and revise that. We must have a group put together to do that.
That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
To withdraw?
To withdraw the...
Can you read the motion again, please?
I would make a motion that we withdraw and go ahead and fund the EDA of the $12,300 and not send a letter to the EDA requesting in two to three years, I believe, third, 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 as we had discussed previously. That's my recommendation. Just leave it like it is.
Do we have a second?
Oh, I think...
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Mayor, I'd like to hear what Bob Bowman said, because I don't like the word litigation.
Give me just a second. Let me see, I can actually, if I can find it verbatim.
What'd you think?
About 10 minutes. All right, here's the question I asked. Am I correct in the fact that we cannot change the contribution to EDA without a unanimous vote from the three entities? Question, we can request equal pay and notify intent to withdraw, but I think we're tied other than that, is that close to right? Bob, and he's on vacation too, keep in mind. Yes, all four entities must agree. Also, withdrawal period is two years. If that's what, if he recalls correctly, that is correct.
So what are you saying legally, we can't do it?
As far as change things up and all that, we can, but it takes agreement of all four parties. I thought it was the three, but now Bob read it as all four, which would include the committee of 100 as well.
Are we stuck in this forever then, unless the other three agree to let us out?
Well, you can do the intent to withdraw.
We can withdraw.
Well, we're two, you can do it in two-year periods, you can.
Under Public Chapter 1101, we can never withdraw.
Adam, that was the reason that I made the statement, if we can sit down with all parties concerned and look at the contract and revise it with everyone in agreement to benefit everyone, because signing the contract to 2000, 2008, we need revision on certain things.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I was going to say, can you change your motion to take the $12,500 off the table today and then renegotiate with the other entities in the next 24 months to some kind of solution?
Or we're out?
My motion would be to eliminate everything that we've talked about in the budget committee and see how it falls.
Mr. Chairman, let me, I've got a lot of credit here tonight, and something I don't deserve, but I'll take whatever I need to do. This EDA membership being started back in the 90s, obviously the resolution was written by a gentleman that planned to work here and make a good living until he retired. He's now retired and gone. Yes, this resolution is written where it's perpetual. Never in our lives of history can we get out of this unless the other entities agree to it. We all know what it is. We're paying 100, crazy, check me if I get way off. We're paying 68%, which is annual, right now, at $168,000, $162,000?
$62,000.
$162,000 a year we're pumping into the EDA. That's, you put that in 10 years, it'll be in half dollars we've spent with the EDA. We have no, I have no issue. I can't speak, remember, I got no issue with Jack Claus. Fine, foul, me and him talking about a lot of things. This hasn't got paid with Jack. This is the EDA board that needs to address this. If the funding changes, then the board needs to make recommendations to increase their funding from other sources, whether that be the cities or new sources, doesn't matter. I had hunted this, I couldn't find it. Jack was good enough to send it to us today with a circle that says we absolutely can change it. And if we do, the board has the authority to take, I believe it's called sanctions or whatever they want to do right there. They may establish or impose such sanctions or conditions as deemed appropriate. So by all means, we can change it now, this year, we can take the 12,3 out. We're being kind, there's nothing in there that says we have to wait two years to tell you we're only going to pay for a third of the cost. The budget committee's recommendation was to do that and give everybody plenty of time to adjust to it. That was why we waited two years, and that seemed fair to everybody. But right now, we're carrying a load of this. That's nearly a penny of our tax rate we're putting and donating to the EDA board.
But the local agreement says you can't do that.
Well, it doesn't. I mean, what Jack sent me today says we can.
That's TCA.
Well, TCA, I think it'd be a little higher than local agreement.
Your only local agreement is your contract.
The local agreement, the local agreement was written before Public Chapter 1101. The local agreement anticipated that somebody might want out, and it gave you a way to get out. You just bail out, but you got to give a two-year notice if one of the entities wants to come out. Then in 2000, 1999, 2000, Public Chapter 1101 come along, and it said every county has to have this joint economic development agency. But if you've got one, you can apply that if it meets the state's regulations. We submitted ours to the state of Tennessee, they looked at it and said, "Yeah, you're good to go, you can use that." So we're almost bound by two different regulations right here. We have the old EDA resolution that was originally passed in the 90s, it was redone, I'm thinking in...
2008.
2000, 2008 began was when the percentages changed, and Lenore City actually started paying more than Loudoun did. I think it was the big change during, I think that was a Dole Art administration. But 1101 stuff, the 1101 laws say, you got to have this joint agency. We don't disagree. I don't disagree with that. The agency needs to be there, but it doesn't say that the agency has to, that we have to give $162,000 a year to the agency. The agency, it's your job to come up with how you want to operate and manage your business down there. If you want a position like Jack Holmes or Matt Filch, whoever, that's up to the board to work that out. But there is no such resolution, there's no such regulation on the face of the earth that says the county is locked into this thing forever, for the rest of our lives, unless the other two say, "Yeah, we'll pick up part of it." We know how that'll go. I mean, we've asked, we've tried. Last year Buddy was supposed to have sent a letter to ask you all to consider it. He told us, he didn't even get a response. So right now, the 12,3 is, that's a really neither here nor there to me. The 12,3 is a minor part. The bigger one is the letter coming to you to say, "Two years, work on it, because we're fixing to cut some of this out." So that's my part. That's where I come from on the equal pay for EDA. I don't, we get less benefit than the county does than anybody. I think the cities are great beneficiaries, benefactors of the EDA. I think they would be glad, happy to want to pay more into it. They could even ask us, "How about paying this much instead of this much?" But 68% balance to us, that's way out of whack.
And even on some of the agenda things that Jack sent out, says the, under the community development, all of what he's listed under community development has to do with the cities. I mean, downtown revitalization, redevelopment, reinvestment in the downtowns of Lenore City and Loudoun. So we have a whole section that is not addressed to the county. And I understand what Mayor Akins is saying too, that the county taxpayers also pay taxes towards this too. Well, then you're looking at, they're almost paying a double amount for services that don't exactly fall under their category either. So I would, I kind of spearheaded at one time, saying, "Mayor, we need to," and you said we wouldn't, and we all voted on getting together and going with the EDA and going back over the interlocal agreement and going over this to see what we could do. I think even Loudoun City, Mayor Harris, am I correct, voted to do that also? All right, and it still hasn't taken place. I mean, asking the taxpayer, especially the county taxpayers, to burden that cost of 68%, I think is a lot. I think looking at dividing up the percentages more equally. I believe that Mr. Schaefer is correct that the interlocal agreement was formed before the 1999 provision from TCA too.
So, I mean, do I understand this? So we're all very appreciative of the job that Jack is doing and that the committees that change... that change often, maybe not often enough, I'm still... What we're saying is, this is great, we want this all to continue, we just won't take the money away from us.
That's kind of it, yeah. Let the cities pay more.
Can I ask a question? Mayor, do you think that your, that Mayor Harris is still interested, do you think your council members were being interested in looking at it as a, as a whole instead of kind of the way that it's being pushed out right now and looking at the contract?
I think certainly, if I have said it right, it's the board that needs to look at it first, and then they bring it back to the government entities. But once again, the cities, both cities already pay more.
Sure.
We pay county taxes, just like Mr. Bridger said. So, you know, we are paying more.
Do, uh... The industrial parks that are in, in our county, are they almost entirely within the city limits of both cities?
The only one that's not would be the one up on the East Coast Telecar, or East or...
Great Bay Peninsula.
Yeah, yeah, that was, and that's TRDA.
Well, my next question is, other than tax revenue, what does the, what do the cities benefit out of the industries that built in the parks that are within their boundaries?
You give both city and county taxes off the parks.
Okay.
Real and personal property tax, along with employees and their wages and benefits that contribute to the taxes in your county.
So, like I said, you have the employees, like I said, if they happen to live in, you know...
Where they pass by, they get a gallon of gas, right? That's still taxes coming back to the county.
I'm just, you know, saying, if, you know, if enough of them do, you know, I see that it's a benefit. I know, I used to go years ago when Alcor was the only big dog around, everybody's economy rose and fell with Alcor. When they had to lay off, the stores had to stop. I mean, I'm just saying that is, you know, those are the kind of benefits we look for when we have industries come in that we get boost from the employees, taxes, things they buy, homes they build, that...
Contracts that work there, being strong there.
Then they pay city and county property tax, right?
Unless they get a pile, then it can be adjusted a little bit. You gotta get that pile, I have to work with it.
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that if there was anything else out there that would benefit other than obvious.
How much money is in the EDA fund?
Mr. Chairman, can I say a little bit? Saffield brings up a good point, because every time, even if the EDA helps us get streetskate or fixes something, you know, for the city, to improve the city, it increases the county's tax rates as well. I mean, it generates much more revenue for the county. I just think where Loudoun County would be if we didn't have the growth that we've had for the last 18 or 20 years in Little City.
Do you know how many businesses occupy industrial park or industries that are in each city, like in Little City and Loudoun, how many are there?
I don't, I don't know. We probably got, I would say, 10 or 12 in the city in our industrial park.
What about cities like...
Have what percentage do we?
Just, you know, how many industries are, do we have?
It makes up the large chunk of the property tax income.
Stikeley would be one, and Kimberly Clark.
Yeah, Morgan Olson.
Morgan Olson, that's all in cities like... Like I said, and they pay taxes to the city and to the county, as applicable to the pilot that they give.
Del Conken, Kimberly Clark are inside the city, here inside the limits as well.
How much did the county get on the sale of Center 75?
Year and a half's worth of his salary, or of the EDA budget. Tracy, what was it?
Yeah, we've got 290, you know, we split a portion of it, but, okay, of the portion that we split already, there's 290,000, and then there's 72,000 still there for the rest of the repairs and the small construction.
So a year and a half's worth of EDA budget.
Mr. Chairman?
Who can answer the question? How much does the EDA have in their account?
We typically keep, there's, there's two CDs, I think, $80,000 and $100,000 roughly in a checking account. And then with our contributions, we close things like the start, the three-star program that we did this year, that was $37,000. We don't come ask you for that $37,000. And so that, that's coming straight out of our checking account that we found and get rid of first. That's the reason we keep those dollars in.
So right now, you just have $80,000 CD and $100,000 in checking account?
That's, that's where I remember, yeah.
One important factor, and I want to say thank you for Jack on this, and I'm not trying to throw stones at anyone, but the past administration of the schools, Jack and I worked for about a year and a half with Morgan Olson to try to put into place a welding and fabrication program, a co-op program with Morgan Olson. And somehow, some way, we didn't get movement, but we sat down two or three times, I believe, was that correct, Jack? And we saw the benefit of doing this co-op program, and it could have been a benefit to a lot of students and to the community as well.
This sounds like a three-star grant this year. There's going to be $37,000 go to, have that go to the county school system, I think, for some robotics and some STEM. The other 18 is going to go to Little City for some, probably PCs for their CT programs. Those are the dollars, you know, those are dollars that we've also gathered this year after we're grants.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion by Commissioner Mears to remove the $12,000 reduction this year and to send a letter to renegotiate the EDA contract, seconded by Commissioner Tinker.
Can you clarify that motion for me?
Point of clarification, please, Chairman. Again, according to our attorney, we shouldn't do this.
He didn't exactly say that, did he?
It said, any change requires unanimous vote of all four entities, any change in the interlocal.
That's, that's my problem, we're stuck, we can't do anything without permission. Permission from three other people who obviously don't want us to change because we pay the most, why would they want to change it? That's my problem with it.
Adam, that's what I'm saying, if we can, in good faith, sit down with the EDA board and let them try to work this out, and then come back, hopefully it can benefit everybody in the future.
I don't think, I don't think there's any motivation to do that without putting the two-year limit on it.
You're saying give them a two-year, no time, then in two years?
Give them that two-year notice that Commissioner Shaver mentioned, leave the funding in place, and you have two years to work on it. And if it's not satisfactory to the commission at time, we're done.
Okay, that changes the motion then.
Well, go ahead and get a, go ahead and get a vote on David's motion, because he's going to stick with that one, see what happens with it, and if it don't fly, we'll go with, if Adam wants to make a motion to leave the funding for this year, but send a two-year notice, if that don't fly, we'll do, don't give the funding and send the two-year notice, if that don't fly, then we're stuck where we're at. So David, I think David's got his motion seconded, I think we're due bound to have a vote on that one.
One more, one more point.
Go ahead.
What we said before, the, any change has to start with the EDA board.
Correct, that's who that works for.
So the board needs to make the recommendation that if we wanted to cut $12,000, the board says, you know, that's the recommendation, that any change, the way it is right now, that has to come from the board.
They can recommend that to each of the giving entities.
And like I said, but if the board happened to agree, three, how many is there, four?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight, eight members of the board.
Eight, so you'd have to get, what, six?
Plus, plus, you've got to get all four of the paying entities to agree. Loudoun City would have to agree, Little City would have to agree, Loudoun County has to agree, and the committee of 100 for $1,000 bucks a year will have to agree. I mean, we're locked forever unless we get the agreement of a majority of their board, and then, then all, not a majority, but every one of the other members of the cities of the EDA.
I don't, like I said, that's a, well, that's a, that's a...
Okay.
I don't think we have a clear clarification, Bob, because I think what you said was he's on vacation too, so...
He's found a reason, though, if the board didn't recommend it, you would, I mean, if they...
In other words, you can't do anything.
If the board recommended it, you're pretty sure there's going to be enough votes on there for it to be, for the cities to agree on it, wouldn't you think? Out of eight? Probably not. Well, I'd be somewhere, you know, I sure wouldn't want to pay more than I had to pay.
Okay, I'll entertain any further discussion?
Commissioner Collins, I just want to make sure that I understand the motion. It is to leave the funding as it is, which is the current rate of $162,545, with a request that the agreement is reviewed by the EDA board and the, and the parties to the agreement every three to five years.
That's correct.
That was the motion?
Okay.
Well, I hope there were, could have been more done than the county website committees have gotten done.
Okay.
So let's do a vote, we know what we want.
Go ahead, Tammy, call the rolls.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
Tinker?
Aye.
Saffield?
Just restore the 12,5.
Aye means we go back where we are, we've got enough.
We pay $162,545.
And you restore the 12,5 and they, we ask them to review it every three to five years. That doesn't actually suit me either.
Just say no, start over.
Just yes or no. Doesn't suit me, that's not on that.
Yeah, exactly.
No, it's not one of them. I don't know if we have any other choice right now.
I had a, I had an option.
Well, we're at the middle of a vote, let's take the vote.
But we got to finish the vote, then I'll entertain another motion.
Whitfield?
Yes, yay.
Owen?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Shaver?
No.
Weller?
No.
Brewster?
No.
Okay, three to...
There you go, forever and a day, we have to pay this for the rest of our lives.
You can entertain a motion now to send them a letter telling them that was your second part.
I'll make a motion, the letter goes out tonight.
On Buddy's birthday, you going to write that?
Yeah, before he goes on his birthday, so.
I thought the only thing this did was just give him the money back. We're still going to, we're still going to talk about it.
Well, that's what this next, my motion will be that the letter tell them that in two years, we will pay one-third, and that's not one-third of the cost, that is a fixed dollar amount of $78,638.
Okay, is that the motion?
That's the motion.
Second. Okay, you got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So what happens at the end of two years? Well, hopefully, we're going to have all this conversation, come to terms, everybody's going to be, you know, kumbaya and agree. At the end of two years, we're going to pay $78,638.
Unless they want to rest it, that's in the...
Same thing. We're talking about it tonight.
That's my problem, we're all, we got to make a decision.
The state of Tennessee, it doesn't have a board like that. Successful now, all you have to do is have a board.
We got a motion and a second.
But we don't have to fund it to extend.
Okay, the motion is...
Send the letter.
To send the letter saying that in two years, is that right, Commissioner? That we're going to fund a third and a third.
And that, that amount would be $78,638.
Okay, and it's seconded by...
And your letter's going, your letter's going to draw a line in the sand.
Yes.
Says, yeah, $78,000.
And somebody, at some point, then has to start having, they start having the conversation. The reason, I'll tell you why the $78,000 come up, that's one-third of what we pay today. We talked about in the Budget Committee and said, well, let's just say a third. Then our fear was, okay, in two years, the cost to operate the EDA would be $400,000. Run one with a third of that, and under the resolution...
It's not, it's not, it's not an increase since 2013.
Under the resolution, we have to pay whatever amount they say. Again, this, we had a long conversation about this in the Budget Committee, this just didn't come up tonight. So we followed this through. It may not have gone up, that doesn't say it can't go up. But under the resolution, it says we have to pay whatever that board says they want, and we have to pay 68% of, 62 or 68%, we have no choice. We're in a loser all the way around. But in the next two years, things can be discussed and get somebody... Well, David wants to have...
That was already in the, in that motion.
Well, no, this forces them to have conversation.
No, that's not what this motion says. It says, in two years, we're going to pay $78,000, period. And that's my, that's my problem with the motion.
We can change that in the next two years.
Well, why don't we just wait and change it?
Because there'll be no discussion without it.
We have to give you a notice.
We just said that we were going to agree with the motion that we just passed, we're going to have a discussion.
That does not give our notice to withdraw if we don't like where things are in two years.
Withdraw from the current interlocal agreement. I'm not sure you can do that.
The TCA 658-114 says that the activities of the board shall be jointly funded by the participating governments, formula for determining the amount of funds due from each participating government shall be determined by adding the population of the entire county as established by the last census.
But that was done after, ours was established before, our interlocal agreement was established before that.
As determined by the last census or special census that's provided. You got census coming up.
They're doing it right now?
I didn't have to pay more. That's not, yeah, under that, we might pay more, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's the, that's the TCA.
And it also says in that agreement too, if you have something before that, that precedes it, then that was accepted, which it did.
It says it can proceed, it doesn't say that.
Yes, it says it can.
We voted it can, but the commission...
Which is what he's talking about, it's been stolen county of my laws, if you can do something, doesn't mean it has to have it that way.
And something to keep in mind, if we resort back to it, then it comes up in the census, we will be, we will go up because we're growing faster than the two cities are.
Yep.
Probably exceed that $78,000.
So let's not get too carried away.
Okay. Same as we were, Adam Saito was the best. Without this vote, there'll never be a conversation, there'll never even be a father change.
I don't have an issue with a, I don't have an issue with a conversation in the next 24 months. I have an issue with drawing the line in the sand and saying, after our conversations, no matter what, we're $78,000.
The conversation can change to $78,000. We're negotiating, we're negotiating.
But it needs to be put in the, in the motion that we're negotiating.
We can negotiate between here and two years, if nothing's agreed upon, we go to $78,000.
But Adam, you dealt with business for quite some time. If you want to negotiate with a group, do you not try to sit down with him first of all, instead of trying...
You tried for a year ago to do that.
I agree, but now we're going directly to the EDA board.
I believe Loudoun City did too.
In the year 2000?
I think they changed about it, because Loudoun City didn't get there either.
In the year 2000, it was 68%. So, I mean, 2018, 2020, it's still 68%. So, I mean, it hadn't went up.
Well, who's going to be doing the talking, Henry?
The mayors.
Like I said, who's going to be doing the talking?
The mayors.
The mayors have got to sit down and talk about this.
They should discuss this and come to some solution on it.
Well, it doesn't do any, like I said, we're still, it's the EDA board that you start with, is it not?
All the mayors run the EDA board.
I know, but they're outnumbered, vote-wise.
Only he's never outnumbered.
I'm just trying to figure out if I'm right, look, I'm, I'm not convinced that 68 is 10. I don't, I don't know that we held to a third. I'm looking for...
What would make you, what would make you go to the committee? We're on the side.
At $78,000, I'll say a third.
I'm not, you know, I'm not saying a third.
How do you, how do you say it to a better...
I don't know, that's what I'm looking for. That's just what I'm asking.
We have the authority to...
We're having a discussion.
It's my birthday. Don't you... Whatever the board says, we're going to pay. Apparently, it's what you pay, you can't just say how much you're going to pay.
I want to be on that board.
But without, you can pay that amount, but then they have options for, to recoup that money. That's the problem. So you need to have a negotiation between them and present your side at one of their meetings. meetings.
And my motion gives them two years to do that.
And, but it has no, there's nothing to end in the end. What happens in two years? You pay $78,000, they do what they need to do to collect the rest of their money. It doesn't mean anything.
That's fine, but hopefully, in the next two years, we can get it resolved.
Or they vote against you.
That's fine. But, I mean...
Mr. Chairman, it, you know, well, we've got a motion and a second.
We've got a motion and a second.
We're having a discussion. This is the discussion time, is it not?
Yes, it is.
If it's not, I'll go out and wait, and y'all read the table, Kevin, when they come back in.
You're elected officially, you're more than welcome.
Here's the thing, I have seen some of these come and go now, and this is the second term, is, we sit here and say, we're gonna do that, or we'd like to do that, and nothing ever happens.
Amen.
Just like the county website committee, just the other thing, you know, just like the last time we, what, a year ago, Ms. Brewster, we were supposed to do this, and nothing happens. The can gets kicked and on down the road, and nothing happens. If we're not serious and want to pursue this, forget about the motion, just business as usual, and let's proceed. We can sit here and say, we're gonna talk about this in the next two years, and I guarantee you, come month 24, nobody will have said one crackling word. I agree.
I don't argue with that.
That's why I gotta put a number at the end, that we're gonna... Unless nothing's accomplished, we're going to that number.
I'll pay, draw the lines and stand before that, you know.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. If I understand that it's to send the EDA Board a notice saying that in two years, our share will drop down to $78,000, am I right or wrong, Commissioner Shaver?
That's correct, but I'm still open to any suggestions to alter that.
We got a second by Coach Satterfield.
But it was Adam's motion, wasn't it?
Well, no, I think he had a different one. We had three different options here.
Okay, and you thought it was yours.
Okay, that's the motion on the table. Any further discussion? Call or roll.
Hurley?
No.
Tinker?
No.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Duff?
No.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Brewster?
Yes.
Mears?
No.
Five, five.
Five, five, getting closer. It fails.
You're not getting close to anybody.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, five, five, what?
Okay, motion fails.
Do you have a note?
I would, I would put a motion on the floor that was in the EDA letter.
Another letter.
Send the EDA letter stating that we would like to have negotiations of one-third split, and this is your notice of two years, that we would like to have this taken care of within two years, one-third split.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We got a motion on the floor to send them a letter.
That's no different than the...
The only difference...
No money involved.
Took the money off the table.
Okay.
And I said, a motion to discuss a third.
But that third is $78,000.
Okay, we got a motion.
When you're gonna increase.
Send them a letter that in two years, it'll drop to a third. And it was seconded by Van Shaver. Any further discussion?
Now, did you put on there that we are asking that we have a discussion with the EDA Board?
So...
And this is their notice that we would like to discuss a third.
Mr. Chairman. So I just, we've had so many letters and motions coming around the time, so in two years, our intent would be to what, only pay a third, or to withdraw entirely?
Pay a third.
So instead of 78, it's now a third.
Because that can change.
So, now let me ask this question, then. If, if the answer is no, 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 then... That's what? That's, there's nothing else we can do if the EDA Board doesn't want to, want to address it and nobody else to, even though we can negotiate. If they say no, then it's not. We can't, we can't do anything. That's correct.
That's not true. You can write them a check, and then they can sue you for the rest of it. You're welcome to make that choice too. You can make that choice.
You missed his question, I'll give...
No, I didn't. His question and what his statement was that we can't... We can't do anything out of it. We can't do anything.
We can negotiate in good faith, but like I said, that's about it.
They don't have to accept our negotiation at three percent.
But if they don't accept negotiations in two years, you just make a motion to get rid of them.
Yeah. That's what, if what's the objective is, is what are we saying for here?
If, if you can't negotiate, then in 24 months, what do you have to do, give another 24-month notice and, and just be done with it?
Yes. That's why you have to send the letter now, 24 months ago.
We can't withdraw, though. The way that it comes to a conclusion...
State requires you that.
No. There is, you, they can negotiate, that's option one, and pay, and negotiate it to whatever the terms, and you'll pay that. If you don't like those terms, you can pay what, $5, and then they can sue you for the rest. Or they can not sue you. That's what the only, those are the two options. There's no withdrawal, there's no, you can pay whatever you want to pay at any time. They will then have the, they will, the board will then have the option to accept that as your payment, or to sue you for the rest. Those are your options. I don't wanna fall so to the option of. Can I ask Mayor Harris a que, again, he read something just a minute ago. He said, payment, everybody, all the parties involved, their payment is based on population?
Yeah.
And that's, is that a TCA?
TCA, yes. TCA 658-114, dated, I guess, 2013, I don't know if that's, 658-114.
And did it say that have any, that haven't broken down in any way as far as a percentage, you know, the county usually...
No, no, it didn't have the percentage broken down, that was in a, that was in a letter by George Miller, when it first...
But it, but it's in hence, as the people involved in EDA, the entities, the cities and the county, payment would be based on their population.
Yeah, the latest, termed by the latest federal census data.
So we would only count the people that lived outside the city limits, as Loudoun and Mid Door City is county population, right? And, and that's how the... Okay. Let me, let me read this, we keep hearing lawsuit tossed around. This again is TCA also, that Jack so kindly sent to us with a red line around it. Says that any, any one of the parties fails to say, make their payment, the board, EDA Board, may establish and impose such sanctions or conditions as deemed proper. I don't know anything about lawsuits. He could, the board can say, we're not gonna do the county's EDA work anymore, well, we don't get anything anyhow. So, I mean, I don't think lawsuit's even an option.
It just says as it deemed proper.
That's it.
As it deemed proper.
As it deemed proper.
Yeah, that's a lawsuit plan, that's a lawsuit plan, just a bad plan, that's a lawsuit.
Sanctions are conditions.
I don't think we should enter into lawsuit, and that's a end result. If you go back and look at...
Why, why is that the end result? Any other entities struggle with something like this that you're aware of as far as...
All right, any further discussion?
All over $2,000.
Okay, wait, let me get your survey.
Any further discussion?
$90,000.
Tammy, read the motion again.
Send a letter to the EDA to have negotiations of a third split. Should be done within two years.
In two years.
In two years.
Okay, we got a second by Commissioner Shaver.
Did you all hear the motion, so that...
Everybody hear the motion?
Mr. Satterfield, did you hear the...
I heard the motion, but I'm sitting here, I'm trying to take what Mayor Harris has read, TCA, and this document, and kind of, you know, if TCA says, you're going to pay your EDA based on your population, it didn't give us an out, or if, or whatever, it's, you know, it says you're based on your population.
That's the same TC, I've got the same thing. It's the same thing, it's the same TCA.
So, there's, until we find, I mean... Let me, let me put this part in there. The EDA Board is there, they get to pick how much they want to spend. They get to pick how much money they need to operate. This board has decided, since its inception, that it needed a director, a very high-paid director. No flex on you, Pat Phillips is high-paid also. This board has determined that what they need is a very high-paid director. Most of the cost of the EDA is two employees. 80% of the cost of the EDA, two employees, probably, have a $230,000 budget, maybe 75%, whatever, doesn't matter. But this board has decided, the best way for us to operate is to have a director, and pay the director well. The director will need a secretary, we need to pay the secretary, benefits, the whole package that goes with it. This board can decide tomorrow, if they wanted to, yes, we're, we're a board, we're here doing, we might not need a director, we may have a different way to do it, we may outsource it somewhere else. That's the board's decision. They're a nonprofit, we just throw money at them, that's all we do. We're just stuck in this unbelievable resolution that I don't know who would have ever agreed to sign all this sort of thing, but they're, it's their responsibility to determine how much it costs to operate their board. We just donate, like we do 911, like we do any of the other nonprofits, we just hand them money, but no other board that we deal with are we tied to it like this one is. Not even 911 are we tied to it, where if the cities don't pay, I might mention, but I would start down that road right now.
And I think Mayor Akins was correct, too, when our census comes back, you're gonna see a major change, too, because I think you're gonna see an increase, right, Mayor, in, in your city.
Yes. Okay, you know, if, if we didn't already have a motion and a second, mine would be to table until our attorney gets back, and gets something in writing, or from him to give us...
How do we get out of this?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if he sits down and says, this is what you absolutely have to do. You can't get around it, can't get over it, can't get under it. If this motion's way out, make a motion. You know, I'm just saying, that, to me, would think, you know...
We don't need a motion to that, you just need the attorney to...
Yep.
We don't have a county.
The mayor has.
The mayor.
The mayor.
Mr. Brewster, you still gonna go forward with your motion?
I think I got a second, didn't I?
Yeah. Okay, Tammy, call or roll.
Tinker?
No.
Satterfield?
No.
Whitfield?
No.
Cohen?
Yes, but put a return address on the letter.
Duff?
No.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Brewster?
Yes.
Mears?
No.
Hurley?
No.
I missed it, I missed it.
Was Tinker, Satterfield, Whitfield, Duff, Mears, Hurley, I was...
Was it five, five?
No, six, four. Close Satterfield, you make your motion.
Make a motion, Satterfield, everybody else has. I said, I, I, this, I think it merits more, I'd just like to see this table, and our, if the mayor sees fit, if he wants to use his attorney, or if Henry feels like the county commission should go out and get her own attorney, whichever one you, whichever one you think will be there. That's my motion, that we hear them, we get legal advice as far as we can and cannot do. I'm just saying, that's not, if he'll do it. I'll second your motion.
Okay, we got a motion to get legal advice.
Bob works for the mayor.
We got a motion and a second to get legal advice.
Oh, he did.
And right now, we'll use the county attorney.
Absolutely.
Okay.
No, we won't.
We got a second to that. Any further discussion? Tammy, call or roll.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Duff?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
No.
Hurley?
No.
Tinker?
Aye.
Okay, it's going to the county attorney. All right, we beat the EDA to death today. Mayor Bradshaw, take us through your section.
I'd call for a five-minute water break.
We got, we got, we got snacks in the back row of the room.
Have a public.
It's all, it's a public, there's snacks in the back row of the room.
I'd call for a five-minute water break.
We got snacks in the back corner of the room. It's the public, there's snacks in the back corner of the room.
All right, here's the deal. We're going to move on, and the choice is, can we finish before hypothermia sets in? Mayor Brad Shaw?
I think it's just now been covered for borderline.
I think it's worked, Tom.
I didn't touch it for a change. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am mine as the, what is it, TCCA Legislative Committee, I have no intention to change that. We have two representatives on it currently, Mr. Duff.
I'm going to recommend my friend, Commissioner, mentor, Commissioner Duff back in. I just changed it.
Oh, he wants to take me off of it.
Right.
Do we have a second?
Wait a minute. Hold on, let's make sure. It takes a motion for my recommendation.
That's right.
Either yea or nay, or amended, for this one in particular.
Got it.
Is that right?
Do you make a motion?
I can't make a motion, that's just my recommendation.
I made a little bit though. I made a motion to put Commissioner Duff on the TCCA Committee, he's been on for a long, long time.
I'll give about a second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, since there's no money involved, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Is that right?
Now the travel trailer.
Susan Harrison said, buddy, have you talked to her? She said she didn't have the money.
The grant will not pay for it. She is still...
She said take it off. What she told me and Tracy standing in the hall the other day.
Yeah, the grant will not pay for it.
Yeah, but she told me she wanted to at least entertain it. She'd still like to have the case, the trailer to haul stuff in.
So just buy it out of bum value?
Yeah, it would be out of, well, she's got some in her budget she could use. We got, we used out of capital, we got some capital projects funded, she still requests the use of a trailer.
She also, I know, I talked to her about it, and she said that every time that they have to load up and rent a trailer.
You all.
They have to rent trailers to haul those things back and forth, so I think it would be...
I don't have an issue with it, but originally it was supposed to be coming out of some kind of crazy promo, and she, I don't, she just told me and Tracy standing in the hall the other day, she didn't have the money. So if we're talking about taking it just out of general fund, then we need to talk about, I mean, we know what we've been through, Budget Committee, we really want to spend another $6,000.
It's just, it's a...
It's sixty, sixty, you got it in the paperwork, sixty-eight, sixty-eight hundred, sixty-eight hundred dollars, I think.
And that was the deal and a half in that trailer too.
That's the baseline on, that was the baseline, it wouldn't be more than that.
It will be more than that.
We'll be lucky if somebody don't drive all the way.
So the grant that we checked into will not cover, it's not an allowable expenditure from that grant. However, she was going to...
We have all capital projects money right now, it's a nine eleven. We drank...
No, this year.
In current year.
You're talking about current year. As long as you got some work paid for, we already know we have no money.
Capital projects?
We've still, capital projects, we've...
There's nothing capital projects.
Yeah, I don't know the exact amount, there's, we've got a good little chunk, not a significant amount, but...
We're fine on capital projects.
I think the motion has been sixty-one, seventy-four, eighty cents for capital projects for that trailer.
Okay, do we have a second?
See that?
Can we roll it up to sixty-two hundred?
Have we got a second yet?
We got a second.
My question is, this is not really a bid, we're not, put this out to bid, right?
Well, it's, you don't have to bid this, we'll get quotes, we'll get three different quotes. We've got a quote from this one right across the river, we've got one from Smoky Mountain Little City.
What's the lowest, what did?
The sixty-two hundred is the baseline.
No, sixty-one, seventy-four, eighty is my motion.
I don't want to spend a dollar more, because they will, I guarantee.
And it is the...
Delivery fee.
There's no wiggle room in that, you're kidding.
No, I'm not, I mean, it says sixty-one, seventy-four, eighty on this quote, so I'm going sixty-one, seventy-four, eighty.
I'll cover if anything over. What was I saying?
Nice one.
Well, we've got, right now, we've also talked to the ones across, at Little North City on 321, they're a little bit more expensive than that. But we'll shop it around, but that's just a baseline.
My motion has been no more than sixty-two, seventy-four, eighty.
This is the clothes, trailer.
Yes.
Since it's less than...
That's a lead, or is it just an empty trailer?
I'll have to see what I was on that, that list, it's machines and all that good jazz.
Well, if we use it, that's what happens, wired for electricity.
I think that comes, they comes with that, yeah, that's wired in, yeah.
And I believe that...
It's suitable for single person dwelling? No, but it could be used for a temporary voting location.
Yeah, that's on board.
Susan Harrison.
I don't think you have to get three quotes on it, because it's less than 25,000, is that correct?
Anything ten thousand dollars, that'd be twenty-five, twenty-five.
So it's, it's less than that, so...
So we don't, so you don't need to bid that at all, do you?
No.
No, we'll find the best deal.
That would be good to have votes on that decision.
I think that, I think that she had another one too, that she got two.
Well, this one, this one over here is going to be hard to beat, like I said, the one, the folks in Little City were about three grand, three thousand dollars difference. I don't know of any other local trailer supplier right offhand.
The quote across the street was the sixty-one, seventy-four, nine. I seconded the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for sixty-one?
Seventy-four, eighty.
Seventy-four, eighty. Any further discussion? Okay, let's call the roll.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Dove?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
Tinker?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Okay, Susan's got a new trailer. Mayor, employee health insurance.
Mr. Chairman, the salary benefits committee we met Wednesday of last week, I believe, is that right?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Chris Rappel's here from Cratchell Insurance, as well as Susan. Our employees, we have about a four and a half percent increase, if you recall from last year, we did set a hundred thousand dollars as a premium holiday to the side, and we'll put that back in today, which bring it to about a four, right out of four. Chris, is that pretty close? Over the last six years, you look at our insurance, and I don't think anybody really local can even touch what Chris Cratchell would have to do for employees allowed account.
So you're taking the whole hundred thousand?
I did bring it up, and the salary and benefits committee, and I would prepare with their decision. It was a good discussion, very good.
I have a couple of questions. The first would be, and I'm fine, I just need to understand, this didn't come to the workshop, and I understand we've been aware of this for a really long time, why didn't we discuss this and get our details to the workshop?
We found, when was the final? We've got our final, final numbers.
My answer would be COVID, not things.
Probably got a lot to do with it, not, I don't have a solid answer, it's our same plan as last year.
Move on to the second part of it, and this is a little bit more complex. This hundred thousand dollar holiday, or whatever it was.
Premium holiday.
Premium holiday. When that all came about, we had this kind of designated, Tracy made to be real careful what we did with that, and the entire time, what we discussed, we knew this would be a one-shot deal, and in a very short amount of time, the insurance would go back up, and we could use that hundred thousand dollars against the county's insurance costs. So I, from understanding what I'm hearing right now, instead of using it to offset the county's insurance cost, we're going to spend the hundred thousand to offset the employee costs.
Overall, overall, it's going to be eighty-two, eighteen.
No, 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 but the hundred thousand dollars is going to go to offset part of the increase on employees instead of the county. The percentage don't change, I understand that.
No, it's, it's the, the way it's, it's five hundred thousand dollars. It's still going to be, we're taking that off the very top, so each part, each company, each, eighty-two and eighteen will both see the, it's not strictly for the employees portion.
And you're saying county, what do you mean?
What we pay, what the county government pays for insurance, and then what the employee pays for insurance.
Okay, okay.
The employee pays whatever, get the percentage, don't get mixed up on this, employee pays eighty-two, or we pay eighty-two, the employee pays eighteen. So, let me get it in a really small picture. If an employee's insurance was going to go up four and a half percent, if we take this hundred thousand dollars to offset the employee's side of the cost, maybe they pay 4.2%. Is that about right, Chris?
Then the hundred thousand doesn't make a really major difference, right?
Well, it's not huge, but of course, this discussion of the hundred thousand dollars and how to apply it and all of that is a recommendation from the Employee Benefits Committee that will come to the Budget Committee. So at the next regular monthly Budget Committee meeting, this will be discussed. But it's my understanding from the Employee Benefits Committee that basically the hundred thousand dollars would reduce the price of the total premium. So if the total premium was reduced, then the eighty percent that the county pays and the eighteen percent that the employee pays, they both would be reduced because the total premium was reduced. That was my understanding from the Employee Benefits Committee as far as their recommendation is concerned.
And the reason it's here tonight is Chris has to know so he can tell the insurance company to print the new cards for the employees. Am I right or wrong?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation. Motion seconded in the conference.
There we go.
Okay, so I have a question. I heard someone say that it's the exact same plan, but I had somebody else say to me that the pharmacy part has changed, is that correct, Chris?
The reason that you have to give new cards is Sigler changed pharmacy providers, that's correct, but they didn't change the benefits. They just changed pharmacy providers.
Okay.
And it's, it's all about, it's all about money, where they can get the best bodies from, who they can get the best deal from on the RX side, it's all it's about.
And, and when the committee met, did, do you have different packages for them to look at, or did they, the different ones?
No, you did not have to.
Okay, we got a motion?
Only need one good one. What was our next closest, as far as percentage increase? The next increase up, when it switched up was, I don't remember right offhand.
Okay, so Sigler initially came back, they gave seven percent off last year, which is a big number, plus they gave it for the premium holiday, which I want to...
You stick up the...
Tracy and your department, they did that in several places, and you guys are the only ones I know that still kept it. They kept it and decided to do what you were supposed to do with it, as we discussed last year. They wanted, based on losses of a fourteen percent increase, I just told them that wasn't going to happen, we were giving back the seven, we just got off, and the seven more on top of that, and we negotiated it back to 4.5, and then we had a hundred thousand dollars that was given to you from Sigler last year to offset future costs, like David said, and that's what we came up with.
Couldn't press them into another holiday, hundred thousand dollar holiday.
I did, but the problem was the money came from RX, and they negotiated, and the government said you negotiate such a contract with your RX, this new company, that you have to get some of it out. So that's what, we got the money, we could have forced them to pay it all the way, we got a huge forceps, nobody else else got to blow it.
What was the net effect for our employees? What was the net effect to our employees? Did you say 4.2%? Four, one, something like that.
Close, yes. Commissioner Shaver had it pretty close, I mean, it reduced the...
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Tinker.
Can I ask one more question? Sorry.
Go ahead.
What do you anticipate them going up next year? Because I think that's just, I know that gets an impression, but kind of looking at trends and things, what do you see that going up? I'm just kind of getting an idea so that maybe the Budget Committee can have that in the back of their mind next year.
I have several municipalities, like yourself, the average increase was probably 10%, almost municipalities. But there were some of them that were 30% that you, that you had the average in, and there were some that were zero. It just depended on where you're at. So I would say the average was 10 to 12%. So you're well below the average right now, and like companies like yourself, you're probably down there between three and seven percent.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? We got a motion to approve it, seconded by Commissioner Tinker. There's money involved, call the roll.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dove?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
Tinker?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Okay. All right, Jack Pauls?
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, just want to compliment and thank, if they're not, anybody that I know of, our dive team over the last two weeks has, well, let's just say Kelly Brandon, she had a trial by fire, her first two weeks as director, they assisted with a drowning, thought to be a drowning, and then the water fire, the house fire, boat fire, that happened over the weekend as well, so if you see Kelly, give her a congratulations, and thank our dive team and our Marine One team as well. Thank you.
Thank you, they've done a great job. And I understand from the team that the two boat fires was a difficult one to put out. Okay, economic development, project strength.
We have a red, red list that is requested, put the dollar figure in there, thirty-nine thousand, I have it for you, so that information was put in there as requested for your consideration tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Seconded on the motion, sorry.
Okay, we got, Commissioner Tinker made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Mears. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I've made very clear my position on pilots, and their heaties were broke, and eight hundred thousand dollars here, or given away eight hundred thousand dollars here in pilots now, how nice would that be to have that money right now? But in this particular agreement, it's probably the most poorly written one I've ever done, who wrote it, I'm not picking on you, I don't know who wrote it. But in the last one, we have a lot of really nailed-down stuff. This one's changed several times, pretty dramatically. There's nothing in this about the clawback. You had specific dollars and cents in the clawback in the very first document that was filed. This one now essentially is saying it did, it did fix a, I mean maximum, it's going to have a maximum amount of money that the pilot will be, and it's the thirty-nine thousand something dollars or something to that effect. But down here at the bottom paragraph, just out of curiosity, it says this pilot's going to be for five years, plus a reasonable construction period. What does that mean?
It means it will not, not go into effect until they're operational.
Meaning we'll get...
So you would get...
We're not going to get thirty-nine thousand.
May be prorated, so it wouldn't start till in the fall. So normally, depending on how fast they can get in and get the work done, so if they don't get there...
Well, they're in there.
Well, they're in there, but they're not, they're not operational.
They've not bought the building yet either.
But they're not operational. So you can't tax them till they become operational.
I don't know, I didn't know what that means, that was my question.
I have a question real quick about that, so does this go into effect when they buy it, or can it go into effect, when is this going to affect, do they have to buy it to go into effect?
That's correct.
With a reasonable construction period, what's that mean, define that?
Well, I mean, we're going to start the pilot as soon as possible, we're not going to drag it over a seven-year period. It's a five-year period, it's a five-year pilot.
Is there a definition of when, what's going to be the fact that'll happen that the pilot kicks in?
Well, if they get operational this year, and they sign the contract to purchase the building, that's when the pilot will start.
So we don't really know when, right?
They had 12 months to buy the building.
Okay. The bottom line...
Because I think that's just, I, I know that gets an impression, but, kind of looking at trends and things, what do you see that going up? I'm just kind of getting an idea, so that maybe the Budget Committee can have that in the back of their mind next year.
Um, I have several municipalities, like yourself, um, the average increase was probably ten percent, almost municipalities. But, there were some of them that were thirty percent, that you, that you had the average in, and some that were z, that was zero. It just depended on where you're at. So I would say the average was ten to twelve percent. So you're well below the average right now, and like companies like yourself, um, you're probably down there between three and seven percent.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? We got a motion to approve it, seconded by Commissioner Tinker. There's money involved, call the roll.
Cohen.
Yes.
Doug.
Hi.
Shaver.
Hi.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Okay. All right, Jack Pauls.
Just real quick, Ms. Chairman, uh, just want to compliment and, uh, thank, if they're not in anybody that I know of, our dive team over the last two weeks has, well, let's just say Kelly Brandon, she had a trial by fire. Her first two weeks, she was director, she, they assisted with a drowning, thought to be a drowning, and then the, the water fire, the house fire, boat fire, that happened over the weekend as well, so, uh, just, if you see Kelly, give her congratulations, and thank our dive team and our Marine One team as well. Thank you.
Thank you, they've done a great job. And, uh, I understand from the team that the two boat fires was a difficult one to put out. Okay, economic development, project strength.
We have a red, uh, there's red legend that was requested, uh, with the dollar figure in there, thirty-nine thousand, uh, having to, so, um, that information was put in there as requested, for your consideration tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Seconded by a motion, sorry.
Okay, we got, uh, Commissioner Tinker made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Mears. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I've made very clear my position on pilots, and their hideous were broke, and eight hundred thousand dollars gear, or give away a hundred thousand dollars here, pilots now, how nice would that be to have that money right now? But in this particular agreement, it's probably the most poorly written one I've ever done. Who wrote it? I'm not picking on you, I don't know who wrote it. But in the last one, we have a lot of really nailed-down stuff. This one's changed several times, pretty dramatically. There's nothing in this about the clawback. You had specific dollars and cents in the clawback in the very first document that was solved. This one now, essentially, is saying it did, it did fix a win, I mean maximum, it's going to have a maximum amount of money that the pilot will be, and it's the thirty-nine thousand something dollars, or something to that effect. But down here at the bottom paragraph, just out of curiosity, it says, uh, this pilot's going to be for five years, plus a reasonable construction period. What does that mean?
It means it will not, not go into effect until they're operational.
Meaning we'll get...
So you would get...
We're not going to get thirty-nine thousand.
May be prorated, so it wouldn't start till in the fall. So normally, depending on how fast they can get in and get the work done, so if they don't get there...
Well, they're in there.
Well, they're in there, but they're not, they're not operational.
They've not bought the building yet either.
But they're not operational.
Okay.
So you can't tax them till they become operational.
I, I don't know what, I didn't know what that means, that was my question.
I have a question real quick about that, so, does this go into effect when they buy it, or can it go into effect? When is this going to affect? Do they have to buy it to go into effect?
That's correct.
With a reasonable construction period, what's that mean, define that?
Well, I mean, we're going to start the pilot as soon as possible, we're not going to drag it over a seven-year period. It's a five-year period, it's a five-year pilot.
Is there a definition of when, what, what's going to be the fact that'll happen that the pilot kicks in?
Well, if they get operational this year, the pilot, and they sign the contract to purchase the building, that's when the pilot will start.
So we don't really know when, right?
They had twelve months to buy the building.
Okay. The bottom line in that same paragraph, uh, if the company fails to meet its job projections for any year, the annual payment in lieu of taxing for such year shall be increased in accordance with the methodology determined by the board. In the, in the original document, there was a dollar amount per job that they didn't fulfill that'd be coming back. So we've taken that out, and we're going to let the...
It'd be the same amount, I don't know why the attorney took that out, it would be the same amount.
But it doesn't say that.
But just... This resolution is just to give IDB the declaration to go and move forward with the, with the pilot.
Well, what we're doing as elected officials, we're handing off, we're, we're giving away our authority in this to a group of unelected people that are now going to make decisions on our behalf, is, is what you're asking us to do.
Are you, are you going to vote for it either way?
What?
Are you going to vote for it either way?
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay, just checking.
I want everybody else to understand what they're voting for, if they vote for it.
I was checking.
So, the methodology to be determined could be a big factor. If the board wants to change their mind altogether on how the clawback might work, there may be no clawback.
And, and the board is appointed by your mayor. Is that true?
I have no idea, I don't know who the board is.
That's correct. Okay, the, the board, yeah, everyone in here has an, has an email sent to them with the board members on it, and Mr. Cullen read it off at the last meeting.
The board can do whatever they want to do once we approve this.
But I think if you take a look at the EDA board, they are...
This is not EDA, David, this is not EDA, this is IDB board. This is Industrial Development Board. Loudoun County's not Loudoun City or Little City, this is Loudoun County's IDB board.
But I think representatives of the city or of the county that will represent the county, very beneficial, I think that...
Who are they?
I have no idea.
Henry Cullen read them off at the, at the workshop.
Well, I'm asking questions about what meanings are, it's all, in the second page, on, uh, section three, the board agreement, the board's agreements concerning payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes related to the property, related personal property, may contain such administrative provisions not inconsistent with this resolution. Don't know what that means.
Please read again.
What, is, you, you want to look at, or you want to be re, I mean, I'm just asking, I'm not, I'm not pointing, I just don't know what that means.
I'd like to know what it means.
Number three.
It's a longer talk for you.
But it leaves, I mean, we're, we're responsible for this, and once we hand it off, we got no more say-so in it. I just, we need to know what we're handing out.
So that, that's basically talking about how they take the property and they put it in IDB's name, and that's how the IDB, uh, that's how you abate the taxes in the state of Tennessee, right?
Okay, the IBD board is Mel Hines, Ted Womper Jr., Tom Myers, James Thompson, Jim Curtis, Nancy Beatty, Bruce Martin, and Mike Webb. I know three of them. So you're saying... Okay, we got a motion and a second. You're pretty sure that...
I, I really have to laugh.
The dollar amount, if you know.
Yeah. And I'll put that dollar amount that was in the original, in the original one, you have my word.
Okay.
They want, that, that number, that...
You're working great, but we both know that, no. Uh, ask, answer Kelly, I'm, I'm sorry.
Has that board met?
No.
When do they meet?
It's not, it's as needed.
Well, when is it going to be needed?
After you take this vote.
Okay.
So they've not met on any of the others that we've done?
We've never had.
You've never had, you've never, this is the first one in the county per se by itself.
And I don't know when that went.
Forty years is the best I can tell them to ram, I don't know if they've ever met.
Okay. Need to get that, that's a historical moment tonight. More than forty years since IDB has dusted off the cobwebs.
That's gross.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
We got a motion and a second. Since there's money involved, call the roll.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
No.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
I'm going to say no, because I'm on the Budget Committee.
But the motion passes.
So Jack, will you send us after, since, will you send us the revision on this when that board meets, and have those other things in there, like Mr. Satterfield's asking?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions for me?
You got a pass. Susan Husky, next up.
Thank you for your time, have a good evening.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Hey, don't get to my ass.
That's a fact, Jack. Part of this company, they've got, part of the business is in Monroe County, but part of it is in Greenback, that what used to be, we, what we called the REA building. And, uh, they've already packed up and put up a police sign on the building over there, that's why I was asking if they had moved everything from there to the Monroe County thing, I said it was either going to be where it is now, or they were going to move everything to Monroe County.
Did he ever answer your question too, about how many of the employees actually live in Loudoun?
I counted out, uh, twenty-seven.
He didn't answer that?
You know, I, I, he, he sent me an email, it was twenty-seven of the employees, which I, I'm assuming that's the number of employees that worked there in Greenback. Twenty-seven of them lived in Green, in Loudoun, and I'm trying to remember how, how many didn't, but there was, there's more that didn't than did, I think.
And they're operating any new employees there?
No, this is, like I said, and, and they've already...
There'll be some expansion, there'll be some expansion on this, I thought.
It has to be, that's what the department's...
They're supposed to provide some services to...
Sorry, Susan.
They're supposed to provide free services to the three, to the three schools that are vocational, in that frame. And I told them, I said, you know, I, I hope that's true, I, I've heard that before too, but that would be a great win-win if they're sending their folks out to the schools and the vocational areas.
I'll revisit that about a year and just see how the prediction wins.
Okay, as they say, that ship sailed. Susan?
Come on down.
Request approval to enter into a multi-year contract for three copy machines, one for Little City, one for library, that is, Employee Benefits, and Loudoun County Mayor's Office.
Motion to approve. Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Money involved, call the roll.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Second item is multi-year mail machine lease, uh, for General Sessions Court.
Motion to approve. Do we, you have to have these separate, or we do them all together?
No, that's the second one.
And we're going to be one now, that we're...
Wait, wait, wait.
So the first motion was all of them, yeah, okay, okay, yeah, I thought we were just doing the one, good, yeah.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the mail machine.
Who's the second?
Me.
It was Adam and Satterfield.
Okay.
We love our conference.
Any further discussion? Money involved, call the roll.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
No, no, I'm talking about me and Harold both, I went first a minute ago, I guess I made it last then.
That staple messed it up.
It's got, yeah, the whole staple's got my whole knife.
Okay, Commissioner Shaver, take us through the ninety-day extension.
Let me, let me dispense with the, uh, the code enforcement part right now, I, I had no intentions for that to be on the agenda for any action, but I will ask the mayor, he said he was going to find out something on that the next day, so, it's rough off the building.
Well, it's, I seriously doubt it, but he does know that there's going to have to be some action taken, or we are handling it for, or we will actually force his hand.
Okay, what, what'll it take to force it?
Uh, it'll take, well, get Bowman involved.
But Bowman can't get involved unless you tell him. We're, I mean, we're ready to go to court on this one.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Back to the conversation, who does Bowman work for? He works for the mayor. Bowman can't move on this one until the mayor tells.
And I made it perfectly clear that the commission was forcing my hand at that even, that in spite of the dangers, something's got to happen.
Are you going to give us the twenty-seven thousand dollars in fines to others?
No.
Well, that's a big part.
Well, if it is, well, that, that's not a very good way to start out a negotiation.
I had enough to go with there.
But anywhere it's got to go, yeah.
Consideration of the extension of ninety days more for him, if you were here last at the workshop, Jim Jenkins, I think, is presenting this to, one, he said he's presenting this to his board at their next meeting, what his proposal is, it's, we don't know, don't know if the two and a half applies appropriate, where it's, he's got it fixed, he's got it worded, he's going to present it to them, they'll make a recommendation to us. So what I'm asking for, and I'll put it forward in motion, that we extend our more for another ninety days to give Jim time to do his stuff.
I'll second it.
We got a second. Any further discussion? What is Jim doing now, man?
All right, within our...
Let me, let me coagulate my question. He's not asking his group for another ninety-day extension, he is finishing up the...
That's correct. We ran out of time because nobody was meeting.
Right.
Planning Commission hadn't met, so our ninety days is quickly going away.
He's about to wrap up his part, we just need a little more time to do that.
That's right, that's exactly right.
Okay, okay.
And we can't act without a recommendation from them.
Any, any more discussion?
That's what I wanted to make sure, he wasn't asking them for a ninety-day extension, so then he could recommend to us a ninety-day extension.
No, 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 this is, this is our recommendation, correct.
No, well, it's not that good. Well, I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing something without their...
No, 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 we're, everybody's on board.
And just so we have...
We got a motion and a second, any further discussion? No money involved, all in favor of the motion? Signified by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, last up on your section, is the burnt lumber at the courthouse?
I'm going to maybe defer a little bit to Kelly on this, because she's had more involvement than me, other than to say, well, Kelly, you do it, you make whatever motion we need to make on it, then you top the...
Okay.
Bowman, whoever's involved.
Yes, I have talked to Bo Carey on the hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee, uh, kind of talked to Susan Husky also, so, what we need to do to get those beams and that iron over to the hundred and fiftieth anniversary is for me to make this motion, uh, to give the beams and the iron back to Johnson and Johnson, to give to the hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee.
Johnson, Johnson to, to the farm's contract.
Or someone, Johnson, Gally, it's, sorry, Johnson and Johnson.
So we're good with that, correct?
She was the one who told me that that's the way we need to do it.
Say that.
And in that way...
We're out.
And that we do have on there that they are giving it to the hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee.
We got a motion to give the burnt timbers...
And iron.
To the hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee, we got no, no...
Our request to send up the signs of Johnson and Gally that's going to keep them.
Okay.
And whatever they do with them.
Hey, can I borrow your truck tomorrow to give me some burnt beams down?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Have you seen them?
Can't comment with the motion.
Go on, read it again, Kelly.
My motion is to give...
Hold on.
The beams and the iron back to Johnson and Gally to give to the hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee.
Seconded by Mr. Shaver, Commissioner Shaver. Any further discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye. Any opposed?
Have those been carbon dated to their...
If you look at the, they've got the old ceramic insulation in them, they're, they're right up here at the edge, if you hadn't seen them, I'll probably get a look.
They're laying on the lawn. Okay, Kelly Brewster, you had some unfinished business on the courthouse committee.
Ooh, I just about forgot about it.
I didn't.
Thank you. Um, I, as you know, we formed the committee, um, to help the process in the courthouse and to move it forward, and found out later that was supposed to slow the process down. So therefore, I'm, we took a vote to form the committee, so now I would ask for a motion to dissolve the commi, the courthouse committee.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor to dissolve the courthouse committee. Seconded for you, Kelly. We got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, we wind it our way down to Tracy Blair and her multi-number of budget amendments.
Thank you, sir. The first item is consideration of recommendation to approve a resolution to accept donations in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred, ninety-seven dollars, as well as two gift cards. Uh, one is twenty-five dollars, one is five hundred dollars, and these are being donated to the animal shelter, and the Budget Committee recommends approval.
Make a motion with a second.
Can we, can we do these multiple, can we do this?
How far, how far do I go?
Animal shelter, animal shelter.
At least the first two.
TCRS.
Yep.
There's a second, there's a second resolution related to the animal shelter, and it is a recommendation to approve a resolution to accept a five thousand dollar bequest to the animal shelter, so that...
Now do a motion, Bill, let's put them together.
I'm just, I'm...
It's all for shelter.
A motion to approve.
Say it.
Motion to approve the donation and a resolution to accept the monetary bequest for the Loudoun County Animal Shelter. We got a motion and a second, since there's money involved, call the roll.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.[1581.82]
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Okay.
Number two is consideration of recommendation to acknowledge the new TCRS employer contribution rate effective July 1st. The rate is remaining the same. It did not change as a result of the, the actuarial valuation that TCRS conducts, and the budget committee recommends approval.
Make the motion approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Hurley. Any further discussion? Is money involved? Call a roll.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Okay.
No good cyberbullying.
Number five is recommendation to approve the statutory bond for the director of accounts and budgets in the amount.
Make a motion to approve Tracy's bond.
Thank you.
If she carries out more than $100,000 with just SOL.
Second.
What's your payment account looking like right now?
We got a motion and a second to approve the bond for the.
Brewster.
Kelly.
Kelly. To approve the bu, bond for the director of accounts and budget. Any further discussion? Call a roll.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Number six, consideration of recommendation to approve resolution to revise the agreement between Loudoun County and the city of Loudoun for the provision of planning support services. The city and the county entered into an interlocal agreement for planning services that the county would provide for the city in the exchange for $25,000 per year. During the preparation of next year's budget, the budget committee is recommending an increase in the city's payment to the county for these services. Their recommendation is that effective July 1st this year, for the fiscal year that will be next year, that the city will increase to $50,000, and then the agreement will expire, termination of the agreement at the end of next fiscal year. There's a resolution for this that was prepared by the county attorney. I think it was forwarded and included in your packets of information. The amendment to the interlocal agreement will have to also be approved by Loudoun City Council. The budget committee recommends approval of this.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead. Do it. We have a motion, we have a motion.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve this, and this is all those we beat to death in the budget committee. And when you read through the list of what all, well, over half of our planning office time has been spent working for City Loudoun, $25,000. And that's a lot. We're on the verge of hiring another plan with all the change in the planning office.
I'll second that one, you know.
Very good, thank you. So depending on how this goes with Loudoun determines on what we do with our planning, it's kind of worth a big impact on this one here. So that's what's wrong with this one. That's been a real bargain now for Loudoun here.
What's the, Ms. Blair, what's the total cost for our planning office each year?
About $170,000, roughly.
So basically, the split with them would be $85,000.
If you went down the middle, $85 is pretty close, yeah.
Okay, and the majority of our planning is being done by the city. I think I've talked to Jim about that.
But I couldn't say personally, majority, it's pretty close, at least 50/50, somewhere along the way, I think.
I was talking to Ms. Smith before she left. It was, she said, at least 50/50.
Yeah. Let me, I'm gonna do this really, really fast, just, just to make a point. Our guys, our, our people, guys, gals, women, responsible for the Loudoun City, Loudoun Regional Planning Commission, Loudoun Board of Zoning Appeals, Loudoun Historic Zoning Commission, they are to receive and process applications for all the zoning requests in Loudoun, prepare and maintain files for all applications in Loudoun, provide staff review services in rezoning subdivision site plans, grants, and requests, special exceptions, so on and so forth, City Loudoun. Coordinate staff review of available plans with the City of Loudoun. Prepare agendas for a monthly meetings and specifically called meetings for Loudoun Planning Commission, Loudoun BSC and Loudoun Historic Commission. Prepare ordinances and considerations for these commissions and boards amended for the City of Loudoun. Assisting the board and commission members, governing officials, and general public with questions concerning zoning warrants for City Loudoun. Prepare recommendations, you understand where I'm going. There's a lot of time being spent during the work for City Loudoun. Loudoun's way big enough now, they need to get their.
And I think that, I think that they're looking at doing something different anyway, but I think to help us out and to move us forward, since we don't have our plan, or I'd like to see us, can I amend this much?
Yeah, you should make a motion.
Amend or I would drop.
I'd just like to amend it to 85,000. And that would be split.
Is that an amendment, or are you?
No, I'll, I'll, she can amend it. I, I can't second that though, because I got the original motion.
I was thinking that.
Okay.
You're gonna change it to 85,000?
Instead of 50. Well, I watched, well.
You voted on your 50 first?
No, you voted on the amendment first. I watched the city council meeting from last Tuesday night, and it was painfully obvious. They walked out from under us, and it wasn't very pleasant about it. The media recordings out there, I think, through them, maybe before I saw it, but they said they, it just wasn't right for them to be, for us to be doing their planning. They agreed, all the councilmen almost just to, each one said they thought it was time to do all, move on.
And correct, I'm wrong, they made quarterly installments, so they're not gonna say $85,000.
That's incorrect. They do not make quarterly installments. That's what the resolution demands and requires, but Tracy probably better than this. For some reason, we let it go, and they make a single lump payment at the end of the fiscal year. That can't continue either, we want to apply the resolution, and it's stated very clearly in the resolution, that it has to be paid by September 30th, December 31st, March 31st, and June 30th of each quarter. So under this new proposal, it will also include, we're going back to the original 2009 resolution, and we'll expect our payment by the end of each quarter.
But, and they're looking at pulling out anyway, so, you know, if they pay quarterly like that, then.
They can pick.
They can go ahead and pull out at the end of whatever quarter they.
So we need to vote on your amendment? Or did you withdraw?
No, no, but we'll vote on her amendment, that first, to take it to 85 from 50.
Take it from 85 to 50, and we got a second?
No, 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 no.
50 to 85.
But the resolution gives them the option to leave at any point in time.
90-day notice.
Right now, Kelly made the amendment. Who made the second amendment?
Waller.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, there's money involved? Call a roll.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Hold on, I, the amended motion is.
Okay.
So do, no, we need a, no, we started.
No, we are, just, call it again.
Motion as amended.
Yeah.
Yep, so it goes from 50 to 85.
That's correct, and with quarterly installments.
Yep, okay.
Do we need to make a motion? Do we need to send a letter to, no, send a letter to?
We need to vote on it. Well, I will, I will send out an email tonight. I'm actually, I'll, I'll send it tonight after the city council let them know. It depend on this next vote.
This happens every year, and Buddy signs it and sends it to them, so this has got to be signed after we vote tonight. Normally, it would've been in the big budget package, but since we're doing it separate, he can do it now, and that was the ideal, to give him a kind of a little head start, 30-day notice, whatever that is.
It's because they're working on their.
Right, right.
So basically, it's, we're going 85 and, okay. All right, Tracy.
We have to vote. Yeah, we just got, we're back to the original motion amended, now we have to vote on the original motion as amended.
Okay. All right, call a roll.
Tinker.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
I haven't been, I haven't.
Okay.
You gotta wonder why they didn't save for this.
Number seven, we've already taken care of.
Did you think this one?
This sounds more than 88.
Number eight is consideration of approval for the work from home policy for department heads reporting to the mayor. During the height of COVID-19, in an effort to continue the provision of services, some departments under the mayor's direction worked partially from home, not completely from home. This has not been addressed prior to this time, just because there had never been a need for it. In making phone calls and having conversations with the comptroller's office and different offices, the advice was given that it would be prudent for the county to adopt a policy that, for the purpose of telecommuting, even though the telecommuting itself had happened because of COVID-19 prior to the adoption of the policy. There had just never been a need. So this has been reviewed, reviewed by the county attorney, and there's a resolution adopted, attached to it as well, for your consideration. There are some things in the policy that may address some of the concerns, Commissioner, maybe you have read it. There's a statement that it does not change the terms and conditions of employment with Loudoun County. It does not negate nor replace the policy and procedure handbook. Employees who are in a telecommuting arrangement may requ, may be required to return to the office at any time. There's a two-week trial period that's involved. They have to be available for phone consultations, email, teleconferences, or may have to report with, to the office within one hour, if required to do so by the department head or the county mayor. Their compensation, benefits, work status, responsibilities do not change as a result of a partial work from home arrangement. Their hours, their scheduled required hours to work do not change. Any hours worked in excess of those hours require advanced approval. And of course, all through the policy, there are statements that says failure to comply may result in immediate termination. One of the things that the attorney added is, on the last page, in the section under execution, where it says employees' employment remains, quote, "at will pursuant to the county policy and procedures handbook." In the draft, the original draft that you received, the reason for this telecommuting arrangement was stated, it was filled in as COVID-19 pandemic, but a blank line is there just to fill it, to be filled in when it's executed. Also, you received a draft that had my name as the department head on it, and what was revised and should be before you now, that's a blank, because it could be any department head who answered to the mayor. The budget committee reviewed this and recommends approval.
I have a couple of questions. If I'm, I'm home now, so who's, what about computer equipment and all that stuff for all the employees?
For our department that did this on a partial arrangement, we did not have equipment. The board of ed loaned us equipment so that we could do that, because we didn't have equipment.
So what are we gonna do if, if everybody does work from home? Under you, you have a lot of employees.
What are you making that?
How are we gonna provide them with the equipment they need to work?
Well, what they were gonna, about this $911,000 we're getting from the state, is they are, they are really encouraging it to be IT. We're gonna make sure that every employee that has that potential to work can and will have access to a, a computer, to a laptop. And most of them even have the wrong, but the portal we use is very specific. Now, I'm IT stupid, I'll be the first admitted, but it's just like, the program we use is just like them set at their desk, the computers are that connected. And so it's secure, it's safe.
Remote, remote into a VPN, essentially.
Yes. Let me, can I ask you a question, Mayor, also? Will they be taking those home, or will you keep them in a charging station? Will it be theirs all the time, or will it just be, these are here if we, if we need them?
Those computers have already, we went back to our regular work schedule today, today. Sorry. That equipment is already back in my office. That, that equipment is already back in the department. Everybody's equipment is there.
Yeah, but for the other heads, you think they would keep it in there, so I was just curious, if they were gonna have them.
Well, you know, undermine, you look, there's only the really two departments that can work from home are purchasing and finance, you know? The animal shelter can't, they've got their own, the media centers can't, so they'll, they'll have access to it. Like I said, they're all back. Now, Susan, you, you all had actually laptops on hand. Am I correct with that, so?
I purchased three out of, they canceled everything because of the COVID, so I just pulled all my extra money together and purchased three 13-inch laptops.
And that's about the limit of, of.
Here's my only two questions, the whole thing, we've, we've looked, we've had a chance to read, just almost the first paragraph or the first paragraph of the description. It says this will be used during pandemics or weather emergencies. I would like to know what the definition of a pandemic is and what the definition of a weather emergency is.
I also have a question about the weather emergency, because if there's a weather emergency, how are they gonna drive out here and get their computers? Like, does that make sense?
Well, that's why we're, I don't know. Does it mean?
Well, it's saying, a tornado comes through and destroys the building. You know, just because it's not, they, they can't get it that day, they may have to have it for weeks at home, do work from home.
I'm comfortable with all of it, I don't have a problem, I just.
And I think pandemic, I think that's pretty much, that's a, that's a.
Well, it is if, it is if it's a federal.
Temporal president.
Quarantined pandemic. Loudoun County can't declare a pandemic.
Right.
But it does.
Unless it's a zombie apocalypse, and I can recognize it, then I'll go ahead.
All you can do is recommend evacuation, though. I still think, we still need a clear explanation included in this of what a weather emergency means. Now, where I'm coming from, this is Buddy right now, and this only applies to his office, but if you read that document, you see that it's written that any other department head can also adopt this, whether we are involved in it or not, I don't know, but any other elected official can adopt this same sort of thing. And I can see where, somebody may say, well, heck, fire, it's, it's snowing.
Well, what if we had a blizzard in '93, another blizzard in '93?
But that's not what it says. It just says weather emergency. Your emergency might be the blizzard of '93. An annex emergency might be the snowball of 2019, you know, when it was sunny and new. I just, I just think it needs a clearer definition.
I just have a question about this. This is a, Tracy's writing in, person in her department.
Julie.
Julie. You know, I'm just, this is why, if, I don't know what it means, I would say, she's got a child that's sick, and is gonna have to be, stay home at least two weeks, and mom's gonna have to, have to be there to take care of her. But, you know, while she's there taking care of her child, can she also telecommute from home and do her job while she's taking care of her child?
As long as she's not under FMLA, she can.
FMLA?
If you're on FMLA, you cannot participate in any work-related activity.
But do Loudoun people work from home to care for a loved one?
Well, we never have, but, you know, I'd, I'd never, I'd never say never, you know, been the way it was.
All hands on deck, basically, sure. She can get help, she's got one that's having, having to stay home, there's no fault of her own, can she take the computer home and work from?
I think that's really, you can do that anytime, individual, a single, this applies to everybody.
No, but I'm just saying, here, yeah.
I think you look at anything long-term, you know, most people are gonna take the FMLA, and it would depend on ability to do, because, you know, one of the things.
You say family medical leave?
If you're out of FMLA, you can't be asked or forced to work if you're out on family medical leave. The government says, no, if you're out for that, then you got a problem, so, no, you can't be asked.
I'm just saying, there, there could be some instances, short-term.
Sure.
That it would be very helpful to be able to do that, not limited to weather phenomena or pandemic.
Well, if you look, come June, if you look at that second, or next to last, last week of June, all the way up through, that's really, if so, if one of Tracy's girls, if something happened, she had to be out, but could work from home, it may take that. If you look going forward in the next year, it may even be one of Susan's.
I'm just saying this, is that the department head would have to request, it's documented the reason, assigned by the mayor, and a prize to the commission that we're doing that, and that way you don't have any, you know, everything's compensated. But, I'm just looking at, I think it's a great idea, and I think it's an opportunity, a human, a human opportunity, that when people are in need of help to do that, to be able to do that. When it comes back, just one question, your question about are these computers gonna, we just gonna find a computer that they use, that will be theirs, that they take home with them? It could be one that they'd use now, but I mean
I think we would probably keep them in house. We would know, you know, if like the pandemic, even like for another pandemic, if they shut everything down again in August, September, we'll still, you know, we'll have enough warning. They can come in, pick their computer up and get gone.
The right, the right, so you like to
Them needing to work from home.
The clerk Clerk of property.
Those two officers really are the ones that's, that could actually really get a full day out of it.
I just, you know, I'm just looking at the possibilities. I think it's great. I think it's an idea. I think it could cover some more options other than just ways of a pandemic.
No, we did the discussion first.
Do we tie weather to the school's weather?
No, never. I have, no.
No, they're independent.
Can I make a motion?
No, you guys started the discussion before I even got a chance.
My question, my question still has, look, the answer is weather emergencies.
Let's make a motion.
We just gonna leave it there?
We're gonna make a motion.
I'll say it.
Okay, we got a motion.
Now we can discuss.
I think you, Hurley and
Hurley, that's my second.
Wouldn't that be up to the mayor to decide?
Well, it might not be the mayor.
I think it becomes to the chief executive.
Other departments do this.
For the most part, they'll follow my lead and this was weird for me when the first year, because the first year we had, what, a pretty good significant snowstorm.
I believe that was, that year, didn't it?
Well, we had the Valentine's freeze or something. We all are pretty much on the same page, but now if it's a dust, you know, technically Carrie or Mike or Chip could close their office due to inclement weather.
Well, here, I, I don't see any weather we'd have less. It would be a massive act of God like tornadoes that would keep, keep any department out for more than a couple of days.
Yeah.
You know, pandemic.
That didn't work.
You know, like I said, we've had one blizzard in 47 years that I've been around, so that was still about three or four days at the most.
39. 39. Check your math. Here's my last question. If you see a blizzard in the forecast, we need four feet of snow. We gonna instruct people to take their laptops home so they can work from, work from home?
Oh, we gonna have enough laptops for everybody?
We will. Well, no, like Tracy's department and Susan's department, they would all have access.
I can't work from home. I must go to my job.
And, you know, if we had to do, you know, employees may not be overly happy about it because we've got a very generous
But it's necessary. Generous and helpful Board of Ed might be able to help out in a pinch again at another time.
Yeah, you know, without hesitation.
I don't know how many more times they're gonna be willing to do that.
Many times as we ask.
No.
Okay. We got a motion and a second to approve.
Exactly right. Without Mike Garin to be always stepping up, we would have been dead in water.
Call the show. Call for the vote.
I'm calling for the vote.
One last question.
No.
I'm asking real quick, if I could, sir, is everything you have and you have available on a server for you to be able to access at home?
We can access our server from, it's just like us sitting at our desktop.
Well, that covers mostly everything you
That's right.
There's been times where we have, you know, offices were closed because of snow and I've had a deadline to get a bid out and I could not, didn't have a computer, didn't have a way to get to my documents on my desktop, couldn't get to work. It would have been most, now that we have a way to access our computer, our desk computer from home, you know, it would help in a situation if I was on a deadline to get a bid out. I could just get out of the house and carry on.
Scan and email and top sheets even, yeah. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Brewster. Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask Ms. Blair in the, in the, trying to move us along here. Can we do number nine, A through F together?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm gonna ask one question though. I've actually got three. And the 800, the 800K for the AFT, that's in a different than these right here or is it in the school board?
Uh, that's in a different fund. It's in Fund 177.
In the judge's insurance, I saw an increase of $14,000, General Sessions Judge.
Somebody, General Sessions Judge or General Sessions Court, one of them. Keep in mind that the adjustments to the insurance, it's not an estimate based on the number, now at this point. It's not an estimate based on the number of employees in the department. It's actual anticipated expenses based on the level of coverage that the employees have. So if an employee started the year with no insurance, but they had to go on insurance, that's why you'll see an increase.
So probably had somebody new come up.
Probably.
I just, I didn't see this when we had the budget meeting. The next one is the legal fee line went up $25,000 under the county attorney.
Uh, did it go up or was there a line adjustment?
I'll be honest, I don't know. All I saw was $25,000 in the amendment.
With school or?
It's ours.
It's a line adjustment.
Okay, so nothing changed.
Okay.
No, that's wrong.
Hold up, hold up, hold up.
That, that's not a line adjustment. That is, it's a new 25 and that is, it's, it's got the KIMBC, K-I-M-B-C, that's related to Kimberly Clark.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We approve number nine, A through F.
We got a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Whitfield.
What?
Cohen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
I do not have to agree.
My statement.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker.
I'm a proud employee of the Loudoun County Board of Ed, completely interested in the proposal, about to be voted, however declared, my argument, my vote interlinked to my conscience and to my obligations to my constituents and the citizens of this body. Yeah, representative.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Because I'm not an employee.
See, isn't it great to be retired, Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Number 10 is the litter grant. It's the same amount that it is this year.
Make a motion to approve litter grant.
We got a set motion and a second on a litter grant. Any conversation, discussion? Call the roll.
Cohen.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker. Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Number 11 is a tech grant.
Make a motion for you to approve.
Thank you.
Well, you can get with it after the meeting. About that.
Eliot, did you second?
Yes.
You can tell hypothermia is just about ready to set in.
I bumped it to 70 at the break.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
Whitfield.
To approve the Loudoun County Library Technology Grant. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Tinker. Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
And finally, distribution of monthly reports. You have copies of the financial sum of the summary financial statement through the month of May, as well as a report on debt obligation. This is for the debt that you approved that was issued on behalf of TASS several months ago. Once everything is complete, I'm required to distribute that to you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mears, tell us about the bonds and notaries.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask you something with your permission. The names are published and if no one has any objection, I will not read the names pending approval permission.
You got a motion and a second?
Wait a minute, there's one in there. He came for lunch.
Which one? I will get. I have no problem.
He'll try.
We're ready for you, Henry.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. I've got one quick one here, Mr. Chairman. We have at least one person watching on TV. It's the election commission director of elections. She says she thinks she actually has money in her budget for the trailer. If not all, if not some, maybe all, she said to tell Adam it might be a dollar more when we get the real quote and
Buddy said he'd cover it, thankfully.
She says she is still watching, so there you go.
Tell Susan we said aye. Okay, I'll entertain.
Now, what we do, how many, what we think that tonight, Chip?
61.
Well, that's
That's 61 bored people somewhere.
We got 150.
I don't mean that they watch the whole time.
I'm making motion with you. I promise you they didn't watch the whole time.
I got a motion.